Good afternoon. It's Thursday, July 25th. I call this meeting of the Board of Library Trustees to order. Could you please take roll call and share how the public can participate in our meeting?
Yes, yes. Trustee Joshi.
Present.
Trustee Moreau.
Present.
Trustee Patty.
Here.
And Chair Silvera.
Here.
All right. For any members of the public, information on participating in today's meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. We ask attendees to keep phones and devices muted. Thank you for participating in your city government.
All right. Our first agenda item, and a very important one, is to recognize our former trustee, Jennifer Felguth, for her service on the board and to the city of Monterey. So Brian, would you please read your comments?
Sure. Thank you. I'll say Chair Silvera. And AF, if you want to come on up or first off, thinking of our trustee. Oh, hi. We have, we do have a visitor. Come on in. We just, I think your pup just missed public, the public comment coming up. That's perfect.
Oh, coming back to you.
You know, we've had library dogs on the bookmobile, so I think this that's fantastic.
I sincerely apologize for.
You are, you are.
No worries. The door was open. Yeah.
Good for you to go this on the minutes.
The, our pup did not make any public comment, did not bark or anything. So but anyways, first off, I want to thank trustee Felguth for her service and apologies that we missed our last meeting there in June. But as you were chair, as I was coming on board, and I really appreciated that time working with you on there, trying to restore our services. So what I wrote up on here is trustee Felguth was appointed to the Board of Library Trustees on October 6, 2020, and served as board chair from July 22 through June 2023. With an extensive background in library service, she brought her professional experience to the board, having previously served as a bookmobile librarian. As a community leader, she worked on advocacy to return the library to prior levels of service and improve access to the community. Trustee Felguth is passionate about library service in her neighborhood and throughout the city of Monterey. She worked with the advocacy group to add a teen librarian back to the Monterey Public Library, championed restoring regular bookmobile stops at Casanova Oak Knoll, increased collection budget, and additional staffing to support Monday hours. As a poet and librarian, she knows the power of critical thinking, literacy, education, and civic engagement. I appreciate working with you as chair when I came on board and you kind of giving me some of the ropes behind the scenes of working here in the library. And I welcome any additional comments from any of the board or staff regarding trustee Felguth before passing it over.
I'd like to go first. I've known Jennifer forever. We both started out as public librarians and then we both moved to this area and became academic librarians. I've known her maybe 30 years. And now we're both retired librarians, and I want to thank Jennifer especially for recruiting me to the board. You said it would be easy, though, and not much work. And another tie that we have is that we're neighbors. I lived in the same Casanova Oak Knoll house on a cul-de-sac for many years and nobody ever moves from there, but finally someone did, a family did, and told Jennifer about it. She was a first for luck to be quite so close to the fairgrounds, but then she moved in and she's made the place even more lovely. The only thing I regret from my time of knowing Jennifer is that for two years, we never managed to carpool to a board meeting. So would anyone else like to, to comment on trustee Felguth's wonderful qualities?
Well, since you are a poet, I decided that I had to write a poem for you.
Oh, Mike, yes. Yeah, no, it's great.
I, since you were a poet, I decided I had to write a poem for you. But since I'm not a poet, I said, how am I going to do that? So I got my friend ChatGPT. So here's my one stanza poem for you. In verses spun from Whispered Ink, Jennifer's voice soars free. For four years, we've had her here with us, but she'll no longer be. We'll miss her spirit and thoughts and smiles and her words that oft held sway. But in the poetry that she writes, her spirit will find its way. So don't put that in one of your poetry books. I just thought it, it was fitting to, to salute a poet with a poem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to comment?
I can say a word. I was a vice chair when Jennifer was a chair. Unfortunately, that was a COVID time, so it was difficult for us to get together more, and I wish we could go through that again. So this time, we could meet more often. Yes. So come back.
I will.
Well, I guess I'd like to say that not only have your contributions to the library via being a trustee been outstanding, but what has impressed me even more is that despite some challenges of your own, you have stuck with us and continued to contribute at such a high level that you've set the bar really high and set an example for all the rest of us to try to follow and well, in simple words, be as good as you were on this board. So I personally thank you for all of that and echo what Harish said, that we hope we continue to cross paths and see you. And I assume that the invitation to bring a folding chair to sit in your front yard so we could also hear the concerts at the fairgrounds for free will remain. And, but I'll call ahead. Thank you very, very much, and take good care.
Thank you.
We have a, we have a gift for you. Francesca, if you want to.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, a bookbag. I love bookbags. Thank you so much.
And Jen, I don't know if you wanted to make any comment to about your time on the board or anything.
All kinds of goodies. I can put this with my, ah, a wonderful mug. I have a mug Jean McCombs gave me for doing a storytelling program for Monterey Public Library like a gazillion years ago. That will go with it. Treasures, treasures, treasures. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. I am so happy, A, that I've been able to serve with all of you and get to know you better. It's been a joy. Marsha and I worked together at CSU MB. Janie and I worked together in library land with MOVACT activities and CSU MB when it first started up and tech librarians, we all hung out together. And it's been a joy getting to know Kim and Francesca and the staff. And I my crowning thing that makes me so incredibly happy is that we brought Brian on board. We needed you. And so I appreciate that. I plan on spending more time writing. I have a new book that came out this week. Yay. And I'll be doing a reading as part of the Peace Lantern Ceremony at Lover's Point on Saturday, August 3rd. And then I'll also be doing a reading with a longtime friend who taught with me at Medestra Junior College at the Pacific Grove Library on Saturday, August 10th at 5:30. So I'm still doing my writing, still into my books, and I'm always here as a library advocate. Because of health issues, it's hard for me to be in crowds. But hey, I can write letters. I can make phone calls. I can send postcards and I can come speak in your behalf. So just let me know. And I am part of the friends, so I can keep helping in that way. And thank you all. And thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate you.
Are there any public comments at this time? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There are a number of items, including approval of minutes, informational reports, and to approve the public library 2025 holiday and closure schedule. We, we vote on these all at once, but is there any item that you would like removed to the regular agenda for more discussion? Can I have a motion to approve?
Well, I, I would like to either ask a question or two or, or comment on several of the items within the consent agenda.
Okay.
If you're waiting for me to do that, then just as fast as my finger can go on the tablet here where.
Do we have, do we need a motion first or to just, no?
Well, I don't know if they're, they're more just comments in the consent agenda item that is the quarterly report of activities.
So from, from, from Kim, is that on page 13 through?
Well, specifically, I'm looking at packet page 15. And the, I guess it's the second bullet point there refers to a career fair at Monterey High School. And it's referred to in the past tense. So there, there was a career fair that took place. And I would like to know more about that because it, that feels to me like a really great kind of event that the library could be assertive in becoming a co-sponsor of or something, and maybe even hosting it at our facility. So when I saw that, I just thought, and I, I don't know, I mean, sometimes career fairs are just a bunch of card tables with information. Other times at universities, I've been involved with career fairs for, you know, graduates of the university who are right around the corner from looking for actual work, you know, and having people from different industries and career directions available. Because a lot of times we say, well, you want to be a such and such, go talk to one. Well, if we can provide them, you know, in person, and I, I think and that's something that maybe because we all come from different backgrounds with some overlap that I think the, the board could be involved in that, too. Helping the staff who are in charge of it. But anyhow, I would just like to comment that I thought our participation in that and be a way of collaborating with another major institution in the community, namely the high school, with, which we've already done some things historically. So I would like to either know more about that. Is it's, can you tell me, is it something that is scheduled on a regular annual basis, their, their career fair specifically, I mean? And that way, I'm sort of thinking of a timeline for, you know, punching them in the ribs and say, hey, we want to be part of this, too?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on the career fair. Our teen librarian Andrea actually is the one that participated this year. And it was an event held during the lunch hour, so it wasn't a very long event. And I don't quite know what the scope was. I would have to find out more information on it. But I know a lot of the teenagers were looking for internship opportunities. And so Andrea is working with that concept, with the possibility of setting up some internships that high school students could do at the library.
Oh, at the library, yeah. And I see Sarah was, it says Sarah tabled at the career fair. I love using nouns as verbs. But anyhow, so, but I just think it's something that, I don't know if this is the first one or the first time the library was involved or tabled at all or what, but it just seems to me like a ripe opportunity for us to get involved and follow through with, in a way, one of the things Brian said when he was interviewing, that he wanted to become more of a community center and involved with community, other community assets. And, you know, this would just be a real good one.
I, I can just speak on, like, just pulling up the flyer. This was their third year doing it. So it sounds like, you know, I don't know in the past years, during kind of the COVID years, how they did it or if they did anything differently. But it seems similar as like we kind of came out when we were talking about going out there about what roles we would do because like the library roles, especially if you're in high school, there's, you know, whether that's a page, like what kind of roles can you do or going out? And I think it's similar also to Galveston University Monterey Bay and some of the, they have their, kind of their internship and their fair. But you will see a lot more careers out there, too. And those do it, like, they'll do the walkway. When they do that right now, they'll do it like in the center of the campus. And all the booths or tables go out there. And then you might get people just asking about either interning or what the career looks like. You'll get a couple of different things, but often they're just good for conversation and getting that. And I will say for this year, the city had a booth, but I asked for a separate library booth because we wanted to have, you know, I felt like it was good to just have our own booth to highlight the library, highlight our volunteer opportunities, which should, could be different.
To discuss opportunities at the library.
Exactly. So we just did library opportunities. And then the city, I think, city manager's office had a table as well.
Yeah, just as a parent of two kids who went to Monterey High, they've always had some kind of career fair and you get a table. I mean, you know, we couldn't bring this 500 students to the library because it's, that they walk around to the different tables and talk. And then we've done them at, at CSU MB also. So they're, they invite different organizations and different kind of people to come and talk to the students so they, you know.
Well, and career fairs are equally valuable for the parents of the soon-to-be graduates to come to. And so because, you know, many parents, for many parents, the employment and career opportunities have changed to when their kids are graduating from whether it's high school or college. And so it'd be good for them, too. So I guess just as a tuck it in the back of your mind, I think that's something that we could really, we the library, I mean, could really make a good contribution toward.
Same point. There must be something at MPC also.
On that same page, a couple of bullet points down.
Hey. Come on.
Hey there. Well, good. Come on in.
Well, always.
Yeah, yeah. Take any spare seat you want.
And my bike's down there if you want to borrow it.
The couple bullet, fifth bullet point, it starts out by saying we are without a bookmobile coordinator. But then on the next page, it refers to the bookmobile coordinator who started July 2nd. And are we still without one? Or did we actually start one on the July 2nd?
No, we have one. So this, this report covers March through May. So it's even March through May already was, seems like a million years ago. So for part of that time, we didn't have one, but Matt started. What was Matt's start date?
Beginning of July.
Okay, beginning of July. And so we have, we have somebody again. It's, it's going very well.
Good. Continuing on that page, the last bullet point refers to having a comic book artist and talking about careers and demonstrating and everything. And I just, I wrote in there, when, is that something that's soon to take place or?
That's going to be the first Saturday of October.
Oh, great.
And so we're looking at a couple, the, you know, the Monterey Museum of Art does a first Saturday kind of event, and they were going to do this one geared towards teens. So we'll be working with youth, with the Yak group.
Example of collaborating with a second entity that's part of the city. That's great. And finally, as far as my comments out of this section, oh, question and then a comment. At the very end of the next page, packet 16, talk about an ANDA or ANDA Academy leadership program. And both of you apparently are attending, so I don't have any idea what it is. Is anybody else, either them or you?
Yeah. So it's basically the, the city manager's office has assigned people from different managers to what they call the ANDA Academy, you know, under onward. And every, I say, is it every month? Every month, there's basically a session. So last session was on basically on public relations. There's other times it was on community development before. So the community development one, you know, the community development director talks about planning and housing and how this intersected like development on Kai Principal and Alvarado Street and, you know, along the recreation trail, like how that's the work that the city does on that. And then last session. So there's just different topics. It is basically ongoing thing that the city manager has set up for basically different managing staff for kind of like an ongoing knowledge transfer of theirs. So at some point, I believe probably next year, in the timeline of 2025, library museums will need to kind of present what we do to the different managers or department heads in there. So people kind of get a sense of what every different departments do. So I have a sense that they'll have like fire department or police, like public safety will talk at different times, too.
So the attendees are limited to current city staff?
Correct.
Because I'm thinking for, especially for this board, being an administrative board, not just an advisory committee or commission, being able to be a fly on the wall at, when the topics for a session are appropriate would be very valuable to us as well. Not necessarily to be as participating as the, the staff are, but like I say, just to sort of learn a little bit about what you're learning about. Finally, on that page, a little higher up, though, on packet page 16, they, you refer to as with a group of staff working on a process to update the library's strategic plan. And that included a public survey that apparently, oh, it's from June through August, I guess. I would just say that any kind of library strategic plan needs to be something that includes working with the board. And I mean, if, if somebody just threw out the idea of, hey, we need to update or work on or modify or something, the library strategic plan, I would think it would fall primarily, to be honest, in the lap of the board with the higher level, at least staff members, working with the board. And it's fine that, in my opinion, that the staff have taken the initiative to get the ball rolling. But I really feel like it ought to include the Board of Trustees as well, since we are an administrative board.
And we'll come back and I'll speak and Kim can speak on this, too. But I've brought it up in multiple sessions over time. This isn't the first time. This isn't the first time it's come up in a report. This has been on multiple uh agendas in the past that it's been in there.
It was also, there was one event where board members were there. Whether it was a conversation about planning, where do you see the library going? What was?
Those under the volunteer appreciation. So those people that attended the volunteer appreciation that was under there, that was one of the
Trustees were at that.
Some, yeah, that was like the
And that really wasn't a working meeting, you know, in concept.
No, it was, that wasn't a, that was this, that wasn't a working meeting with the board specifically on that. Right. And so I think we can work on the next steps on that. And this isn't, it's still in process right now. And as I talked with the staff on there too, is that the survey was opened through the end of June and, but then because of summer reading and like the priority of like getting all of our events and getting everything going and we're still getting requests to partner with recreation or do other kind of events right now. Is that in losing several staff that I felt like it's not a good time to I felt it was a better time to really just take a pause for a moment so we can get back into the fall and get um, everything going, getting the building open, started, and then come back and look at the next steps again. So we'll be calling the staff back again. Okay, Kim, if you have any additional thoughts on that?
Yeah, and I I would just describe the process so far as like an information gathering stage of the process.
Would it make sense to, since you already have a group form that you identify here that's working on it? Would it be a workable and profitable idea to add to that group? Cause you meet and discuss and what you're gonna do, a member of the board?
Yeah, and I think we could, we could probably, it would be good to bring the, this as an, as a discussion point to a future agenda item so we can speak more specifically on that. And then come up with a more of a plan and, you know, action so that we, people in the public can make a comment as well on on that too. And then we could assign whether that's one trustee or two trustees, what that would be. Um, but I think that'd be good for us to look at for the next agenda.
I think it would be a good example of collaboration between the staff and the board, number one. And number two, the person or persons from the board who would join this uh staff group that you mentioned here would be like liaisons between that working group and the board. And uh, uh, we've, similar to when we've had people, when we still do, who are representing the board at meetings of the Board of the Friends. And then they come back and tell the rest of us what's going on. And so I I just think, you know, there could be a way that would make it um convenient and doable. So let's, let's do, schedule that or talk about it or whatever. You and Janie maybe, since she's chair, could talk about what, how to set it up. I don't know.
Yeah.
Just, I have one more thing, but I'll step back if somebody else has a question or comment about a agenda, I mean, a consent agenda item.
On that same, on on the bottom of page 14, uh, there's a typo in the very last bullet about the museum of
Oh, the block party.
Block party. That's, that's all I have to say.
Any other questions?
I agree with Bob about the strategic plan needing to have the uh, board involved.
Uh, one last thing, just to prove that uh, uh, on behalf of all of us, we do read the fine print. In the uh, chart, let's see, this is uh, packet page 22 of the uh, statistical report. The next to the far right column gives data for the last 12 month period from July to June 2023 to 24. And I look down there and uh, I see, for example, I just happened to pick on this one, uh, 146 programs for adults during that 12 month period. And that conveniently, without stressing the arithmetic part of my brain too much, turns out to be on the average about 12 a month. Then when I go back and I look at the calendars on the website, there's nowhere near 12 a month. Adult programs listed on the calendars. So, and I wouldn't include, even though it's in green on the calendar, I wouldn't include these meetings as adult programs. Cause it's not a program for adults as opposed to for teens or for infants or whatever. But anyhow, there's nowhere near uh, an average of 12 a month. And so I wonder what goes into counting up 146 a year above and beyond the ones that are actually listed like they're, you know, the programs in the community room and so forth.
The ebook and technology help that happens twice a week falls into that category.
That's kind of a drop in thing, isn't it? I mean, it's not really a pro, it's a, it's a service more than a program. It's not like you have a speaker or a demonstration or a PowerPoint or anything that I would conceive of as a program or a reading or a um, uh, like a, like a reading or something. I mean, that's to me a service where we have a tech person and they may get a dozen or they may get zero people coming in with questions, right? In fact, there are some examples of what uh, that person, what kind of questions, like how do I set up my homepage or something?
I'll just speak on
Counting those, there aren't 12 a month. On average, maybe some months there are, but if you look, I scrolled through the calendars going back, starting uh, last month. And, you know, counted up all the green spots. And in my mind, I excluded the green spots on that calendar, which are for adult events that were our meetings here. Because that's to be not a program for adults in the sense that I'm thinking of them.
If you have 12 a month and you subtract eight a month for the tech help, that's now you're down to four a month.
So then it shouldn't show 146. Yeah.
Exactly. So if you factor out the tech help and other things like that.
Like our meeting here.
Yes.
In my mind.
Be more realistic.
So a program for adults is where there's a reading or a presenter or somebody talking about investing or Medicare or uh, performing uh Irish folk songs we've had, you know, and readings, that kind of thing.
So part of this, we use what's defined also on our programs, what's defined by the state library, even when we're reporting. So the state library has data for how we report what things are like for for a program. So for example, I'm gonna pull up, if you want to look at the data on here. May 2nd, technology and ebook help, Kennedy Road Days Talk. Friday, tortilla flat reading, technology and ebook help on Tuesday. Aloney basket weaving on the Sunday, medical decision making on, on Tuesday, Kennedy Road Days Talk on Wednesday, Thursday, technology and ebook help. Friday, from the Archives Captain's Cell, Coletto Collection, Saturday, Tortilla Flat. Tuesday, technology and ebook help. Tuesday, Book Fight Book Club. Thursday, technology and ebook help, Saturday, Books and Cooks. Tuesday, technology and ebook help. Uh, so reading volunteer orientations, depending on how you put on this volunteer orientations, I don't think those are on their programs. We have the technology ebook help sewing with a, uh, Friday Sewing with Julia, adults. Tuesday, technology and ebook help. Thursday, technology and ebook help, Friday, Before They Vanish, Iceland. Um, all ages. And that, that was that month, that was May. And then if you go to a events like April, this is what's on the calendar. Technology and ebook help, rental inventory drop in assistance uh workshop, technology ebook help on Thursday, rental inventory drop in workshop. So the rental inventory book drop happened six times that month. And April, the technology and ebook help, rather than repeat myself, happened uh nine times that month. And then we also had Monterey in the Mexican era. Community conversations with the library. The Tiananmen Mission Film Screening, Community Conversations with the Library, Kennedy Road Days Talk, Book Fight Book Flight Book Club Before They Vanish, um, Kennedy Rose Days Talk. So I'm not seeing that we had only four programs or anything. And it basically, if you're looking back, this is what's on for April. June was technology ebook help happened, was canceled a couple of times. So we had that nine times. And then we had uh, Before They Vanish, Summer Reading, uh, let's see how this is, Book Flight Book Club, Jewelry Making Workshop, Lavender Scare Film Screening, the Ad Astra Talk with NPLFF.
Some of those are all ages, right?
Right. It's, well, the, the Jewelry Making Workshop was for teens and adults. The uh Speaker Series most more for adults. The movie afternoons, that's for all ages, depending on the film. Now, that Lavender Scare was more for adults and teens. In a different movie afternoons. So I was just thinking, and then we've had the Sewing with Julia on the Friday. So there's a number of different things that happen. And I was just saying that when we categorize what's on there, unless we had some other kind of category that we were looking for, you know, whether that's tabling or whatever, it's like creating additional data for, we're using these data points for the state library for what we need to report to the state for them to track different data compared to all other libraries across the state. So that's basically why we use that. Unless, Kim, if you have any thoughts on that. And so that's why I think some of the events you'll see like really low attendance, because we will mark actual attendance on there too. And we use it like on our database. So that, to access database. So that's where you'll see something where it has the programs for adults, but the attendance is done there. And when we go to like outreach events, generally somebody has like, we use a little hand clicker. So some of those things we don't have it. So you'll notice like there's 500 people, for example, at the, attending the, you know, the
The career fair.
The career fair. But other times, like when I was out with Whale Fest with Bianca, her and I were, somebody's clicking that every time somebody comes by. Cause we track that data, then export it all. And at the end of the fiscal year, we have to report it.
Thank you.
I had one more.
Okay.
On the, as long as we're doing other things, on the, on the um, page 19, the revenue balances. The library trust fund. So is that additional revenue that we haven't expected? I mean, you know, the, the budget, the budgeted to variance. So that's, we have more money than we expected to have. It's called spent, but it's sort of a debit. So does that mean it's accrued or?
Right. So yeah, that's, that's just what the, how they do it in our, our financial system versus spent. It's just, it's weird. It's not actually what's spent. You're right. But basically, yeah. When I was doing the budget for, when we were doing, when we were doing the budget for last uh fiscal year, Francesca and I were looking over the budget last fiscal year on this. And there was one thing that we looked at was actually, I didn't know what grants we were gonna get, you know? So it's one thing to say like, this is where we get. So like, if you think, okay, MC gives, we may get 50, 60, 70,000 dollars. And then for Friends and Foundation, we'll get this amount of money. So we have the additional 116,000 because we got additional funds from state grants, basically. That's where that came.
That's, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, but that's, those are the parentheses.
Thank you.
Oh.
But.
True.
You want a motion?
Wait, the, the calendar is included in the consent agenda, right?
Yes, it is. Would you like it removed for discussion from the consent agenda? According to Robert's rules, uh, Francesca tells me we're supposed to uh, not discuss the consent agenda unless anyway.
Well, if there was a motion on the table, then the motion gets discussed.
But the motion is to so.
All right, then I would request that the uh, item from the consent agenda that is the 2025 calendar
All right.
Be discussed separately.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the remaining items?
Still moved.
Second? All right. Um, does anyone object to the consent item being approved? All right. The consent agenda is approved. The item on the calendar of closures is moved to the regular agenda. Um, are there any public comments? Was I supposed to ask that about? Okay. All right. So continuing on. Do general public comments come now? There aren't any. Okay.
The calendars.
All right, the calendar is now open for discussion.
Bring that up first.
Do we have a motion first to approve the calendar and then we discuss it? Sorry? Okay, second. Can I second it? All right. Any comments?
Are we open for discussion of the calendar now?
I believe we are.
One, I, I think assumption I just wanted to confirm is that there are one, two, three, four Mondays on this list of dates where it says the library will be closed. And is that assuming that since we've been closed on Mondays for, what, years, months anyway? Uh, it would just continue? We would continue to be closed whether it was Martin Luther King Day or President's Day or anything else on this list? Or is this, we would close on Mondays even if we got permission and funding to, you know, start working on Mondays, which is what we have asked for. It's a city holiday, so.
Right. And so we do have staff that work on Monday currently, and we are planning a soft opening of a library this, you know, if we can in August is basically the
Yeah.
The, the plan for that. So yes, we would actually be, generally be open to the public on Mondays in 2025, with the exception of these Mondays.
And then uh, I see that there are two other city holidays. One on which we will be closed and one this indicates we will be open. Uh, the one is Juneteenth, uh, June 19th, it says we'll be closed and that's asterisk indicating it's a city holiday. And then uh, Admission Day on September 9th, it indicates however, despite being a city holiday, we're gonna be open. My personal feeling is that if we're not gonna be closed, just because it's a city holiday, obviously. I think it would be better if we were closed on Admission Day. Because I think that gets less attention than Juneteenth. And uh, open on Juneteenth so that we could have programs that day related to why we have Juneteenth. You know, and the history behind Juneteenth and what it means to so many people of our local area. And I, I, when it came up this past month, I just felt like, hey, we're missing the boat. There are programs going on all over the place and we ought to be offering some and participating in some too. And so if we're gonna be closed one uh, of those two uh, city holidays and open one of them, I would like to be open on Juneteenth. And a lot of people don't recognize or even know about Admission Day. But I think it would be a perfect day to have some special programs.
I will say on there that Juneteenth is a federal holiday and Admission Day is not. So that's part of why I think where people get more, they see more about June, Juneteenth as it's now is recognized as federal holiday. And that's where you get more of the, the um, information as out there as well, because it's the newest federal holiday out there. One of the sites that I've been talking with folks about is actually doing more on Juneteenth at the Presidio Museum. Because that is where you, we have the, we've had the Buffalo Soldiers, which were stationed in there and actually built housing in the upper Presidio as well. So they were stationed out there with the cavalry. You know, so that's a possibility for, for that. But yeah, if there's any other comments from the trustees also.
Well, I was just curious about whether you can tell a city employee that they gotta work on a federal holiday. Can you, can you open on Christmas and tell them they gotta work on Christmas or New Year's? I don't know.
I will say that's why would, and Kim can probably talk about this kind of historically or Francesca, which was basically, I know a couple of these days were on the weekend where we had things like on the, after Christmas or after that in the past year or two that I've been here, that one of us has been working on that Saturday because of how the city holiday working on that Saturday because of how the city holidays run is that the city staff were not working that day, except for on-call. So you have to get on-call staff because the city, the regular staff have a holiday on that day. And so I showed up there and I
So for example, Thanksgiving, you have both Thursday and Friday because the city closes on those days, but you're open on Saturday anyway.
Right. But I mean, like on Christmas, you know, when it was, when it fell on, on the third, how the MOU is written on terms of like the, there's December twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, when the twenty-sixth falls on a Saturday. Or if it falls on a Friday, if we open on that Friday, we've opened afterwards, then we have, we have to have on-call staff or myself or somebody else to kind of staff it.
Yeah, that's true. The regular staff would have the option to work if they wanted to and accrue the holiday, but that's, that would be a personal choice.
I distinguish between the library being open as in open for checkouts of books and things like that, the help desk, things like that, as opposed to having programs. And supporting that argument is the chocolate and wine benefit. The library is closed, but it's actually open, physically open for the event. So physically open, we can have programs for Juneteenth. The library can be open for programs, but not open in the sense that you're checking out books there or getting. So that's, I distinguish between the two.
But someone has to work at the library to do a program. Someone has to put on
To keep it open.
Or if it was a movie, turn on the projector. Right, yeah.
Well.
But I'm just saying, why, why close on Juneteenth and be open on September ninth? I mean, Admission Day is for the state of California. So maybe it's a state holiday. I don't know. It probably isn't a federal holiday just for one state.
No.
But
I'll just say, I think because when it's a state holiday, every municipality gets the choice of putting that into their their, their, basically their MOU and how they, what they observe, what the city observes. So if it's a state, not every municipality in the region is going to observe Admission Day. So it's up to each municipality to say that. That's why some places have Caesar Chavez Day. Others not. Those are, those are state kind of holidays that are on there. We're on Juneteenth because it's a federal holiday more and more more and more municipalities are observing it as they rewrite their, kind of their rules and their MOUs with their contracts about that and putting Juneteenth into their, their holiday on there. So I think for us, it's about just putting that in there of, what are the people, the regular, the residents used to and kind of coming in there? I mean, if we want to close on that day, I think it's actually easier for us for planning wise. You know, if we're closed on a, on a city holiday, you know, for us to be consistent. But for the past several years, we have been open on Admission Day. So this is basically consistent with past years where we've done as, since the time that I've been here, where we have been open on Admission Day.
Even though it's a state? Something or other.
Right, yeah.
Well, what about the Thursday after, I'm sorry, the Friday after Thanksgiving? That's not a federal holiday.
I'm not sure. I, I think it's
Pardon me?
I'm not sure. I can, we can look that up. I
I just looked it up. I have a list of federal holidays and the Friday after Thanksgiving is not a federal holiday. The state, the city takes it off because you have it here. It can be that way, but for some reason, we're closed.
Right.
I mean, we, the city. And including the library. So I, I don't I don't think the argument that, or the, the thinking that, well, it's a federal holiday, so we should close is necessarily because here we're closed and it's not a federal holiday.
I think at some point we have to respect our staff and their, their time to take a break. So I think we have to respect the time for the staff to take a break during the holidays for Thanksgiving. And that's typically why municipalities have Thursdays and Fridays for people that are traveling in and out.
I'm sure.
And if we were to say for Friday that, you know, okay, staff, you're going to be assigned, even though you have the holiday. People have, people have that day off. And so we would have people off that day and then we would open for the public. And we would have no, you know, that would be saying to your library director, okay, we want you to work on the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Oh, no, and I'm not suggesting we change.
I'm saying if we, if we're using that as, if we're using that as an example of like, we want to open based on those holidays. I'm saying for Admission Day, if, if it's easier, it's easier for us on the planning side if we are closed on a holiday. I'm going, we're going right now with what the past practice has been for past several years in terms of admission. The only difference here right now is that we're recognizing a federal holiday in terms of Juneteenth. So that's the one that we are adding. So if we want to change something on there, I'd love to hear additional thoughts and opinions on what we should do. But if we want to tell the staff, okay, you guys have to come in on the Friday after Thanksgiving, I don't think people are going to do it. I don't, I really don't.
No, we shouldn't, I don't think.
In, in employee contracts, aren't those, aren't the holidays stated? I mean,
Yes.
So they are not required to work on a city holiday if their contract says so.
So that's where if we wanted, that's, I mean, the easiest way, if you, if the, if the one we're looking at is to close on Admission Day, which would be consistent with the city holidays and it would align with the city holidays. That's, would just have to be at a new process that we have not done here as a Board of Library Trustees. The Board of Library Trustees has wanted to be open on, on days afterwards. And that's why we, we could close that.
In other words, close on Admission Day and Juneteenth is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Because the city is, I mean, the other departments in the city. I only brought this up because I just felt like Juneteenth and what it means and signifies and honors and you know, it is important and that it, it provides us with an opportunity for participating in everything related to that. And if we were going to pick one of two, looking at those two in particular, city holidays to be open and the other one to be closed, I was going to suggest flip-flop, just flip-flopping those two.
And I'll just say
Does the city have other activities planned for Juneteenth? It sounds like you have something at Presidio, right?
No, I mean, we had the matter of opening, we opened up the Presidio Museum for that, but I had talked with some community members that wanted to do an actual program or anything for next year over there. And as, as trustee Joshi was just mentioning that I think there's a difference between hosting a program and opening the library fully. Because opening the library, then you're working on the staff desk, you're bringing in volunteers, you're bringing in staff to shelve the books or return everything. But in the program, you could say, okay, we're doing something on the evening and having a discussion that night, whatever that is. And that's, that's entirely doable. That's a, because that's a lot less in terms of what's on there. You know, that's figuring out who can open up, what's
So it's possible we could separate those two issues.
Right.
And say the calendar, the library for services will be closed on Juneteenth, Juneteenth. But that in the future, we could have ongoing discussions about a program that would be on Juneteenth. But that's what
It can involve some staff, obviously.
Yeah, but it might be on-call staff because people
Yeah.
Have that as a contract that they don't work that day.
A compromise option is to have programming the day before or the Saturday before. Yeah.
That's many places do. I mean, you say it's on Juneteenth, but it's actually on the weekend before or after or something. So.
Let's see, Juneteenth is a Thursday, so following that, those thoughts, anytime Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday preceding that Thursday of the week could have programs, a matinee movie, if there's such a thing, that would be relevant in the afternoon sometime. You know, it could be a teen event in the afternoon after school. They come and it's a Juneteenth-related program. And then avoid the question of whether we should be open on that Thursday or not.
Is the city having any programs? I mean, are we duplicating the program that the city might be having?
No, not that I'm aware of at this time. And I think that would be something they would plan because they would look at typically, when they're going to do an event, the city is looking at either outdoors or you're looking at the library, you know, sometimes they might do something like Hilltop or something like that. Or the Conference Center. And I think the Conference Center oftentimes is really booked out around times. But I think that's where I've, I had people in the city contact me about potentially doing something next year. But I don't think, do you recall if there was? I didn't see anything there. I think the, the Stanton did, the Stanton Museum did a number of series of events for Juneteenth. And I think that was one of the ones that was there.
Are we ready to vote on the calendar? Motion to approve?
Yeah, we, I think I did.
You already did?
I made a motion.
Okay. Okay. All right, great. All in favor?
Yes.
Bye. All right. This calendar is approved and we will move on to general public comments. No, we don't have those.
That's correct, but there are no
There are no. Okay. So the last thing on the agenda is to review the policy and procedure for the annual evaluation of the library director and discuss the timeline. As chair, I want to thank past chair Joshi and trustee Petty for doing the evaluation last year. I'm good, since Diana's new, I'm going to continue in that practice. And I've asked Marcia to help me with the evaluation this year. We have talked several times together and we just met with HR to talk about the policy, being the practice of surveying staff. And we went over with them and we need to clarify with you a timeline. So can we have those? Marcia printed out this timeline? For discussions?
It's a draft suggestion.
It's a draft.
Okay, you two have one?
Yeah.
I don't have one.
Oh. She gave all of it. Brian doesn't have one. And so the staff survey will go out on August fifteenth, I mean, the fifth with about ten days for replies to come in. And we will also ask for Brian to do a self-evaluation. All these things are due to us. Frange, no, sorry, Marcia and I on on August the nineteenth. And we will compose those into a packet and distribute trustees. Trustees will have two weeks approximately to send in their comments. And this year, we're going to propose that it is a little different than the long word smithing sessions that we had last year, which were helpful, but they did go on quite a while. We're proposing that Marcia and I create a draft from all your comments. And then that we disseminate the draft to you. And then we have the session on approximately the twelfth to meet in closed session and finalize the draft. Decide who will make what, what comments to Brian and so on. And then on September nineteenth or thereabout, we'll meet in closed session with Brian to actually
This is the way we had done it in the past. Last year was the first year that the entire board sat here and wrote the, wrote the thing. In the past, we had always written the draft. I know when you did it, Bob, you did
Yeah, the chair basically wrote the draft. Yeah, sure.
Exactly. And then, and then we all look at it and so that it's not really a change. It's kind of going back to the way we did it before.
So I have a couple of comments. One is that all the place where I work has been traditional to have a review given about the same time as the hire date. So since Brian's hired it is August sixteenth, I believe. We should try to move it earlier next year. And now last year, I couldn't move it earlier.
I think your hire date was September sometime.
No, it was August. That's why we got a notice or I got a notice.
That's why I want to involve you.
Yeah, well.
So that's one thing. The other is that we generally have, we have always had two closed sessions. One doesn't seem to be enough.
Well, if we don't have to go over every word in the draft.
But we do.
I've never, I don't recall two closed sessions.
Oh, absolutely. I, I was doing it.
You mean two plus the closed session with the director?
Yes.
Because there are two on here, but one of them's the meeting with Brian.
Now, we, we
You mean two prior to that?
Two. But you remember? Okay, so we, we just pretend that we're going to have one.
Well, the second one was the one where we spent all the time word smithing the document. And that won't need to ha- happen this time because if we're going back to the old way to do it. I mean, we can have a second meeting, but I don't, if
We should do some time, but we should assume that there will be one. Plan on it so that way it doesn't come as a surprise.
A question on September tenth, it says the subcommittee submits the draft.
To the board.
To the board.
To the board. Does that mean we have a meeting on the tenth?
No, 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 we send it to you and we meet on the twelfth. You have two days to look at it.
We will send it to you. And then then we need to go over the ground and you can change it.
And where it says trustees send in their comments. Don't we have a form that we fill out?
Yes, yes.
So that's what you mean. You don't mean comments.
Right, right.
Trustees fill out the form and
There is a form.
A form for trustees, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be similar to last year.
But the thing is, well, then what is contained in the packet on the twenty-first of August?
The packet is the survey results, the, the written evaluations by the city manager, Friends and Foundation, everybody we'd asked for input. And Brian's self-evaluation. So that's the data that you use to write your comments.
I don't see the date on here when the director turns in his
I'm sorry, that got left off. It's the same date as the feedback from the city manager.
Oh, okay. So that's part of the nineteenth, okay.
Brian's, Brian's self-evaluation should be added to that.
So, so the idea is your packet will contain all the data that has been gathered.
And these are
I'm trying to remember if trustees didn't fill out their own ratings prior to getting the feedback from everybody else.
No.
So we wouldn't be influenced by what
No, 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 it has to be based on
We base it on
Okay. I, I see that number one sends out the staff survey. It says send it out on the fifth, which is a Monday. Staff return it by Wednesday, the fourteenth.
That's what the HR recommended.
So they would have several workdays to compile it and do the graphs and summaries of comments and that kind of thing.
So that's going to be returned by staff to HR by the fourteenth.
Yes. That's what they're going to say. They will send an email to staff. Staff will, will complete the form on the, online. And then the deadline for that will be Wednesday, the fourteenth. And then HR will have a few days to actually produce the document that shows what the comments were and how many people said what.
Yeah, yeah.
That kind of thing.
And then that plus the city manager and friends and director himself all get put into the packet that's referred to here.
Yeah.
Which we get a week later on the twenty-first.
Right.
A week after the, oh, actually only two days? Whoever's going to put that together only has two days between the nineteenth and twenty-first.
The big part is, is massaging the, the survey data. And then we just add to that Brian's self-evaluation and the evaluations received from
Like city manager.
Yeah, yeah. So
So basically the packet consists of, let's look at those things you just mentioned as raw data.
Yeah.
So you're just taking what you get from HR, from staff, and what you get from Brian and these other folks. Almost, basically verbatim, without any
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
We don't touch.
Mostly, I was just thinking about you only having two days between the 19th and 21st to do a ton of work.
No, we send it to you, you look at them, you decide on ratings and comments on the form.
Using our, the trustee's form, and we have this other information at our side.
Yeah.
And then we send that to you somehow.
You have two weeks to send the form, including all your comments and, and ratings.
Yeah, on the 3rd.
Yes.
Or by the 3rd.
Or, yeah. All right, I mean, these dates aren't exact because there may be a reason why we can't have a closed session on the 12th or the 19th, but they're just, you know, like a week far.
So then, let's just say that, unless all of the rest of us send you our comments way early, let's just say you don't get them all until the 3rd, hypothetically. Then you have a week to write up the draft and submit it back to us.
Yeah.
And that, that's the draft of the chair's report, basically. And then we have that for two days, and on the 12th, we meet, and that's when we can suggest changes or whatever. And after the 12th, there's a week.
Well, Brian has a week to read what we.
Well, yeah, and then we meet with, with Brian a week later on the 19th. And no, mostly, I just wanted to understand what's happening at each step.
Well, this, so the question to you all was, does this work for you?
It's very similar to last year.
Okay.
The same.
Do the dates work for you?
Are, are they?
Move forward, that's what.
Is there some reason why?
Oh, the calendar has to be looked at.
Well, let's see, the only dates, I mean, some of them, the only dates that require meetings are what? The 19th of September, the 12th of September.
That's it.
And as far as this goes, that's it. But we also, of course, have an August 22nd meeting. Anyhow, I mean, a regular bolt meeting.
Yeah.
But I think we discovered in the past, we had sometimes tried to combine it with a regular board meeting, and it was just too much. I, I, I felt it was just too much, and it seemed better last year when we divorced it from the board meeting and just had us.
We had a quick board meeting, as I remember, but a quick board meeting, and everybody left, and then we got on the table in the middle, and so we did combine it, I think.
Yeah.
The meeting was very short.
I think that you have to have a, a public comments.
Right.
That's the board meeting, so it wasn't a regular.
Do you remember that? We went directly from the board meeting to the.
I think we, we sort of asked amongst ourselves, do we want to come back another day for a separate meeting? Or just take a break and then pick up the same day because we're already here? And that's, I think, what we opted for, as Harish is remembering.
Right, a separate, a separate day.
No. We took a break and then reconvened for the closed meeting, just like the city council does. They, they often have a meeting and then they can have a closed session.
Do you remember what we did last year? Do you know? Oh, that's right, you weren't there. Right, but I think we just had a, I can check, check past.
If you want, we can.
Anyway, you can look back, but.
Let me see.
We, we told HR, we would let them know if this is, if this is a timetable that works, and it does. And, and we need to know from Brian if it works for you.
The only thing, and I would say I won't find something this month, is that I may have federal jury duty as of August 1. I'm waiting for the first two weeks of August. This is federal court up in San Jose, so I'm on call for the first two weeks of August. Or I have to call in to see if I have to serve. And.
But if it's the first two weeks, that's not going to interfere with anything you have to do here.
Right, but if, but if, but if they called on a federal case, I'm not sure how long it's going to take. That's just my only thing, and I will, I will know that.
But you can opt out. I mean, they just like, when you when you're called for jury duty, you appear maybe if they call you, and then if somebody has a reason, you can say, I have a reason for opting out.
Yeah, I think this, that's what, you can ask for that. This is the, the court in San Jose, they had, I filled out the online survey, you know, because even though you're just, you have to be up to 80 miles away, and you get served for this, I don't know anybody else that's been called for federal court, so I don't know how long it would take. But that's just my, my concern is just that, and I will let you guys know as soon as possible, yeah.
Well, our, our, our alternative, I think, is to push it to October. And that didn't seem to us like a great idea.
I looked at September of last year, and we had our regular Thursday bolt meeting, but then Monday of that week, we had a closed meeting.
Right.
And then we had another one on Tuesday of the following week.
Right.
At least in my calendar.
But it wasn't at the same time as the bolt meeting.
Correct.
Different time.
It was Monday, Thursday, Tuesday.
Right.
So Harish was correct in that there were two meetings to work.
The 21st is when we had an evaluation meeting, according to my calendar, then on the 5th, we met with Brian.
The 5th of what?
October.
Really? No, it was the 6th.
Right.
Right, that, right, that's what we did. We had a public comment, and then we adjourned, so it was really.
There's our note you're saying, recorders in the glove compartment to remember it. This is the 21st, yes. Right.
Well, we will hope that there only needs to be one.
Well, like, like, like you said, Jenny, there's no guarantee that rooms would be available and all that, but of course, for a closed meeting, we don't have to meet in here or have it available by.
That's true.
So we could be at one of the library rooms.
Oh, sure.
You earned somebody's living room for them.
You just need that recorder, that's it.
Yes.
Well, perfect.
Depending on what they have in their wine cooler. But yeah.
So overall, this doesn't present problems for anybody.
Put off.
Yes.
I think this looks good. We can, we can go with it.
Seems to be that one thing, we can proceed under the assumption that everything's going to work, and if it doesn't, then we'll have to juggle things around.
Yeah. The only thing I was surprised that is that HR wants so many days. I think that's way too many days.
People are slow in responding.
Oh, to leave, you mean to have the survey out or to process the data, which?
Last year, that happened.
To get it back.
Yeah. They didn't get all the responses and that to send out the niggogram.
They, they had it, yeah, I think last year was just one week, and we, we recommended two weeks, and we compromised on a weekend, two days, or something like that. So this is a Monday to the following Wednesday. So it's like, yeah, a week and a half of working days.
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking, the shorter any of these spaces between dates can be made, the sooner we.
But when you have part-time people, sometimes they don't work, you know, one, one or two days a week or something.
But this is online, they're doing it, right? So they don't even have to have a job that week, and they can respond.
They, some people don't want to do it on their own time, maybe. Or they don't have a computer at home or.
Wait, do it on their own time. They don't get time off from work to do it. I mean, it's their own time.
That's not it. They just said, not everybody responds in the time required, so.
That's why you shorten it. So if you have to extend it because of the late people.
What is your recommendation? One week, three days?
I, I would.
Well, if we, I, I, I appreciate giving them a weekend, so the 5th, what day of the week is the 5th? Let me see here.
That's a Monday.
Yeah, so I would say Monday, and it's due the following Monday.
Well, we can take that back to HR and see.
Is that?
First of all, Monday is a holiday.
Which day is?
The 5th.
August 5th.
The 5th would be a holiday.
What, what holiday is that?
It's a holiday.
What holiday is that? Is that your birthday?
It's Monday, no? The library's closed. August 5th.
August 5th.
August 5th is a Monday.
So you're saying that there aren't.
This year, right?
It's not a holiday, it's a closed day, but we might be open, you said, in August.
Right, if we can get the folks to, the on-call staff to get there, but August 5th would potentially be our first day open.
All right.
But that's just the first day that they have the ability to answer it anyhow. It's not the due date. They, they, the, the survey is available online, right, for the staff, starting Monday, the 5th. And I'm just saying that whoever's tabulating that, you know, the, all of the various responses, grouping them and stuff, should be able to start doing that on the 12th. But maybe that's not a big enough deal to change if you want. I just don't understand why HR would want to initially drag it out.
Do we need a motion? Do we need a vote on this, or can we just get?
I think this is fine. We should just.
Okay.
What's it say in our agenda? What do we?
It's just review.
Doesn't say approving.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So thank you very much, and if things follow differently, which they often tend to do, we will let you know. Okay, so next we have tr- library trustee comments. Anyone want to comment?
I'm thinking, start with him.
I, I can start.
Start with Harish.
Well, I, I. I'm sorry to hear that our history, the historian, Andres, he, he left. I heard that he got a job closer to where he lived, so I don't begrudge him, but I, I do think we lost a good person.
Kevin comments?
No, I'm just encouraged by the planning that we have started to think about, and especially the potential for integrating what we want to do with other constituents in the city.
No comment. I'd just like to say that we are very happy that there are some additions in the budget, but the advocacy effort will continue and hopefully be even more successful, so.
Let me just say that I'm always almost shocked when I look at the financial reports we get and the comparison of the total amount we get from the city's general budget versus the total amount we have raised and goes through the trust fund.
Yes.
And the comparison of those with each other. I try not to think about it.
All right, do we have comments from director and staff?
Yeah, just want to thank staff for everything they've been doing, keep the library rolling and popping, and it's been a great summer, and I appreciate all their hard work. And kudos to Andre Scarsa for getting the new role. We do miss him. Great addition for when we had him, really, so he went to another library system that was also a library and museums system. So that was one of the only ones else in the state that has a library and museums kind of department with a, with another governing board and advisory board.
Ah.
So it's kind of an interesting, that he's got the experience here to go there, which is great.
Where is that? Is that Berkeley?
Arcadia.
You're kidding? It's Arcadia? That's where I grew up. So Arcadia is the only other one that has a museum, library combo like here.
Have with a board of trustees.
And the board is an administrative board? I thought Berkeley's was too, no?
Berkeley's is, but they don't have a, they don't have a museums, they don't have a museum combined with.
No, but their board is administrative.
Right, so they also have board of libraries.
But Arcadia's is also.
Yeah, so there are multiple libraries in Southern California with board of library trustees, but one that I was, I reached out several, like, year ago to different board, different libraries. There's about three libraries that have libraries and museums in the state or so, but one isn't our, two are basically governing, or, you know, administrative with.
How interesting, because when I was a kid, is when they built, I don't know if they are even in the same building, but it's when they built the, quote, new Arcadia Library, when I was a teenager there.
So that, yeah, so it's looking forward to going down there sometime and visiting and seeing.
Yeah.
And succeed there. And then I want to welcome Matt, who has joined us as our bookmobile coordinator and gotten cleared, and been going out and doing outreach, and we love seeing the new stuff in there, and that we have put in the request to hire the local history librarian. So that request has gone out. We're going with human resources for that recruitment, so keep posted for that, and hopefully that will be being released soon.
And the assistant director?
I'm still working on job description, because the description that we have, the last one was back when they hired Doug Holtzman, so it's, that's the last description. It's very thin, and so I actually went through and looked at all the regions to see who has assistant director versus deputy director, what the differences are. So I, I basically downloaded a chart and been getting descriptions, because I have to write that description, run it through human resources and all of that, but that's going to, I think that's going to take time, because you want to make sure that you have a a solid description of what that job entails and what the requirements are for degrees or different things, because it would also work with museums, which is unique for this region.
Yes. Does the local history librarian have a component of reference? I mean, it, it's a librarian is required rather than like an archivist or something like that?
I think it's really like a librarian is the classification, the working title is the local history librarian, but we've, one of the places that I asked to post it was Society of American Archivists and worked with also to California Association of Museums, and just posted in a couple of places that are, because a lot of times when we've done these things, they'll have equivalencies on there, then when you score points on what's available there, you're trying to screen for the best qualified candidates. Kim, any?
I can't really speak to that. I think HR does a lot of that qualifying of the applications. But I was also going to say that our new RPT, Circulation Library Assistant 2 starts on August 1st. That is going to be Lucio, so we're excited to have him join us. He's worked in, in academic library during college previously, but then this will be his first time in a public library, but we think he'll catch on fast. And summer reading is coming to a close, so get your summer reading logs finished and turned in. Our summer reading, end of summer celebration is this Saturday at 1 o'clock on Colton Hall Lawn. We're going to have a musical performance by Zun Zun. They're doing a musical show about water conservation, and then we're going to have a tie dye, your own bandana, and you can like hang out and build things with cardboard again, because that seemed to have been really popular last time. And so the program officially ends on the 31st. We'll give people until August 1st to bring their logs in and get raffle tickets, and then we'll pull the raffle ticket bins to start drawing prizes. But the people who come in with their reading logs that are running a little bit late, they'll still be able to get their ice cream or In-N-Out coupon and their free book for a little bit of time in August. Because school is starting shortly, and that's the other big thing we have on Saturday. MPUSD now hosts a one huge event for back-to-school, inviting all the MPUSD families. They have it in Seaside, so, but it covers all the Monterey schools, so we're sending two people there on Saturday morning. And last year, they had the same event, and it was, they saw tons and tons of people come through, so we're ramping up for back-to-school also.
Great.
That summer went fast.
Thank you both.
Thank you. You don't know how many people are in the summer reading.
I haven't added up the statistics yet.
See who.
Well, we have, we have the sheets, but I don't think anybody sat down and added them up yet.
Now we use your. Now we adjourned.
You're going to hit the gavel.
Oh, I hit the gavel. The meeting is adjourned at 5:25.